We're going to get started.
Everybody had to go back to stuff.
We're going to start with roll call. We're going to call the meeting to order and, Mrs. Luton, let the record show that all board members are present. And we don't have anybody called to do the pledge today, so I'll be doing it. Would you please stand with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You get used to that because the people will be on vacay and they won't be available to come in and help with that. All right, and then we'll move to the approval of the agenda and that the board approved the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion to approve the Tuesday, May 1st, 2018 Board of Education Studies session agenda?
Salute.
Charles with a motion.
Second.
Jerry with a second, and everybody please vote. Off to a good start. Mine showed up. Okay, and everybody agrees to that plan, and just going rogue on you for just a minute because we have a nice guest with us today that Jerry wants to introduce, so we'll do that before public comments. Go ahead, Jerry.
Point of privilege, thank you, Madam President. I wanted to introduce Mona Coleman, who is, was a board member at Bolivar, past president of MSBA, and has been an unbelievable advocate for public education. She's here completing her distinguished service level for board member certification. And so, one of those requirements is attend a couple of board meetings, and she picked, you know, one of the best boards in the state to go see.
And us, too.
And then stopped by on a way. Oh, neat. Welcome.
So, we're glad you're here. Thanks a lot.
Yes, welcome. Nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Do you have any tonight? Okay, then I shall not read these three paragraphs. Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to information reports, and we do not have information reports tonight. So, we are going to move on to the ever exciting preliminary contracts, agreements, and change orders. That brings Carol Embry to the floor.
Yes, thank you for that great intro. This evening is first read. You'll have this for the next couple of weeks until we seek your approval at the May 15th meeting. And I will highlight for you with regard to the contracts, agreements, and change orders, the full listings that are provided. If you look at just the top 10 items on that document of the higher level, the 15,001 cent through 499,999.99. Those are relative mostly to capital projects work that has been vetted and is moving forward, specifically roof replacements and boiler replacements. And the other couple of items there, one is for information technology, and it's actually our new bid for our copiers throughout the district. And the second thing is to support our learning team, and it would be library bids for the final renewal option. So, all of that would have been brought forward to you at a previous board meeting. If you have any questions about any of those, I'd be happy to answer them. We also have some work comp. Excess insurance is a high flyer, as well as on the purchase order side, there's policy renewal for liability insurance is one of the primary items, as well as outfitting the adoption for curriculum. So, yes.
So, Carol, the ones that are award pending by the, by May 15, you'll have the
Pardon me?
You'll have the actual bids.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
I did today, we realized that we did not have the compensation study included on the listing, so it's posted on the front page of the board docs items, just to indicate that we will be bringing that forward May 15th as well. Actually, interviews were conducted today on the compensation RFP.
Carol, what, the Harrison Stadium? Is that electricity or just maintenance?
I will have
64,000? I'm just curious if that was just electricity or
Let me see here. Harrison Stadium joint use facility, so the vendors' jury, yeah, so we would pay them.
Yeah, I just didn't know what we were responsible for.
Right. I don't have the specifics.
Nope, that's fine.
The contract covers maintenance.
Yes, I would say much
That was maintenance, right.
Typically, that would be what those agreements support, their costs associated with.
Capital stadiums, I was just curious if that was
I know one of the benefits we got is they returned.
Yes, exactly.
So, we didn't have to fund that, but they take some of the money that I think we put into that to make sure that they can upkeep the stadium also.
It's not an issue. I was just curious what was
Sure. Do you need more information on it?
Get around to it.
Okay, we'll add it to the list.
Don't. Put it way down on the list.
Okay. Okay. So, if you do have questions during these next two weeks, feel free to give me a call, and we'll get some more information for you, including that Harrison Stadium question.
Is that the end of that?
That is the end of that.
Well done. Next, we have board policy, and I'll turn it over to John to talk about that.
Sure. Just two first reads, EHBC and JHD that come out of MSBA. This wraps up, I think, everything that we had pending. Correct, Kathy, on the updates? So, we will be caught up until the next section comes. So, these two have been reviewed by administration and recommended for first reads, so take time to look at them over the next couple of weeks. If you have anything, follow up with us, ones on data governance and the others on school counseling.
Well, and then we'll move on to new business, which brings Ms. Embry back up to talk about the City of Springfield agreement to donate interest in real estate.
Yes.
She just needs a chair.
So No, it's part, she's getting her steps in.
Yes, this is part of the wellness program for Springfield Public Schools. So, basically, the information that is posted on board docs tells the story behind these, both of these items that have been provided. They are agreements with the City of Springfield, and they are in connection with that primrose widening. So, they're just basically documenting that which we have agreed to in terms of relocating the soccer fields and allowing easements for them. One is referenced as a donate interest in real property. So, again, it's a conveyance of 37,270 square feet. It's a perpetual right-of-way for that area. It also includes a temporary construction easement. And I will note for you, because this is relative to real estate, when the vote does occur, it will require no less than two-thirds of the members of the board voting affirmatively, and that means four, four people in that situation, or excuse me, five people. Also, the, the second item is the cost-sharing agreement between the city and the school of the district. And we have reviewed that estimate during previous discussions, and, and the work has actually moved forward, and there have been approvals for specific pieces of the work. But this is basically to solidify that work with regard to who is doing what on the relocation of utilities and that type of thing. The bulk of the utilities is being handled by the city because of their relationship with city utilities, so to get the best benefit that way. Do you have any questions about either of these?
Okay, no questions. You're going to move on to your next topic?
I have it. So, this next item is the real estate surplus item, and the address listed is 529 West Division. And most people don't realize that we own a little piece of property at that location, and it's referred to affectionately within the district as the Quonset Hut property because of the Quonset Huts located on that. It's been used in the past, as I understand it, as an old general services center prior to the move to that location right there on Chestnut Expressway. And the property is not functional in terms of certainly not electricity to it, that type of thing. We have used it for some minor storage of grounds equipment, and we would be relocating that equipment to another facility. So, the recommendation is that the board would authorize and direct the sale and transfer or lease of the property located at 529 West Division. Has other wonderful opportunities.
It's first read tonight. Let us know if you have any questions. If you drive by and take a peek at it in case you haven't seen it.
We get to keep the hut.
The hut, probably not.
That just depends on if somebody wants it.
It depends what part of the
That crooked exit to your backyard if we get to keep it. Okay, very good. Now, we'll move on to 6.04, the Blue Ribbon Community Panel recommendation, and John will do that.
Sure. One of the things, as we've talked about facility planning and kind of the next steps, that's been brought up kind of casually over and over, and started the conversation with board officers really, was about another round of community engagement. We've had multiple. We've had surveys, we've had feedback, we've had some open meetings, those kind of things. But are there some community members that are willing to step into this conversation with us and engage? And when we say community members, we mean parents, we mean teachers, we mean business leaders that are representative of the entire community, geographically, diversity, and review what we know, basically. This process has been used before, I think, 2003, from the research that I was doing. Last time it was done by the district. It's also been used by other public entities, just to have engagement, to get good feedback, to serve as a, another sounding board for the board, to really get information and give thoughts regarding next steps. So, based on a little research and conversation with the board officers, I've put a little something together that would kind of outline a process, and want your feedback on that. It's really not an administrative process, this is a board process that you would endorse and that you would ask the community to lead, and we would just provide information. So, I'm going to hand this out for your review, and then we can kind of chat about it tonight. We won't act on it by any means tonight. It's for your consideration and for you to modify as you see, but just wanted to get the kind of conversation rolling. So, first thing is, what do you call it? I have no idea what the best name is. We've listed it on the agenda as Blue Ribbon Community Panel, but it's also been just simply called a Community Task Force on Facilities. So, that's what this document's titled. The charge would be review information regarding the current state of our facilities and provide recommendations to the board and administration regarding appropriate next steps. The membership, 25 to 30 SBS stakeholders, including parents, students, teachers, community leaders, et cetera. The group would include representation from all five high school attendance zones and be representative of the diverse population of our district. Timeline, if you guys decide to proceed in May with this, obviously, can start whenever, but I thought would be begin in June with the charge and initial information from the district. So, we kind of open up meetings to say, here's what we know, right? So, here's what we want to share with you. And then the group would determine what additional information they need in order to build their recommendation. And then the expectation is that they would meet regularly, and we've just put twice a month as a starting point, or as requested by the group until the project is complete. So, it's them to do their work, it's not us to direct that, and it's whatever time they need. Additional information, just as a starting point, would, I don't think the board holistically would approve the group, they would approve the process, and then the recommendation would be that the board officers lead the process of selecting the membership based on this kind of set of guidelines. Two board members, potentially three. I don't know that you'd want to do quorum of the board because it would look, it would become an official board meeting at that point, but maybe two or three board liaisons are intended to serve, to be conduits back and forth to the board, to just say, here's what updates are having as this happens over the next few months. And all meetings would be open to the public. They would be posted, minutes taken, so that we could have a transparent process to gather feedback from that group. And then that, it's really up to that group what they do at the meetings. Do they just want to review information? Do they want to take public comment on that? That is up to that group. It really wouldn't be us determining that. It would be the community group. So, we would kind of envision, historically, it's been either chaired or facilitated by community members, not by board members, not by administration. Again, we're just serving at the mercy of and providing information, too. So, that's kind of what, from research that I've done on other ones and what's played out here, where I just kick off the conversation and say, what do you like, what do you not like? It's your group whether or not you want to do this or not, but this is kind of following up on some conversations that you fed the administration of a potential next step, so it's your decision.
So, is now the time for you to question, Bruce, or a comment?
And I've got no problem with group. I'm just, when are we, that's the board, getting the recommendation from the architects? When is that coming?
That, they've just started that work, so it will likely be closer to late June, July?
We think it's kind of July. Kind of our thought process was, if you start in June, then you can give initial information. You can give the facility master plan, you can give a demographic study, that's kind of the first things, and then by the end of July, maybe they have the information regarding those pricing options, because we think that's relevant information that they would want, as well as the board's going to be able to review that, too.
They meaning the community task force would want?
You got it.
Yeah. And my, my only thing is that not, again, the more people that have input, probably the better our proposal will be, I think. But when it says recommendations, do you, what if they recommend something that the majority of the board doesn't want to do? That, you know, I'm, I think that could be awkward to me. Or we can say, or we, not we, or I can say, whatever you recommend, I'm going to go with, you know? Or I believe 30 people may make better decisions than seven, or sure, better than one. So, whatever you recommend to us, we'll just agree to, and that's what we're going to do. Because when it says they're going to make recommendations, you know, again, I'm trying to put myself in that position, if I'm one of the 30, and I'm going to meet twice a month for a couple of hours a month, and I'm going to be doing, there's a lot of information they're going to have to
Study.
Study, and that, just not the meetings, to come up with a recommendation, because we've had it for a couple of years. So, it's, I just think ahead of time, to avoid any bumps, we need to be able to tell them what exactly is going to happen with the recommendations that they give us. Or we just, you know, I really have thought about that, to say, you know, maybe the best thing to do is that they're going to, these are 30 people that are willing to invest a lot of time and everything, and they're interested in the community as well as we are, and the schools, that whatever they suggest, we'll say that's what we're going to go with. Or it would just seem awkward to me if they make a recommendation and we'd say, well, we're kind of like about half of it, and here's the others, things that we think we ought to be doing, or the majority of the board thinks that. So, that's my only issue, is the
How do you manage it when it comes back to
How do you manage it when it comes
I think that's valid.
It is.
I think that's a valid point, Bruce.
And so, I don't know the right answer, is what I was saying.
Do you have more to say about that? Well, I think that's a valid point that he brings up, and a couple of things strike me just with that comment. One is just the terminology and wording of recommendations. I mean, you could, we said words method, I mean, you could say options. I mean, you could pick a lot of different things.
Say feedback, right?
Right, feedback, whatever.
You could say the word out.
Guidance.
That might be a better
I mean, so, guidance, right. So, there's terminology that we could use, but the other part of it is, is if I'm somebody on this task force, I would want to know what the clear outcome you're wanting from me, as well as kind of a draft job description, like what is it? Yeah, just, yeah, I mean, I know the charge is there, and that may look like the purpose, but, but at the end, what is it you want from our group? And if I understand correctly, the, yeah, so, that's just on that point, is how do we communicate clearly what the desired outcome is?
Without saying, we want you to do this, right? I mean, say, we want you to give us this, 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 that's not the goal, we don't want
We don't even
Oh, that's
That's an artificial process, that's not what rich, rich did a real feedback.
Well, if, if, if it's not meaningful for them, they'll be at two meetings and you won't see them again.
Well, and you don't ask, you don't ask people to volunteer their time and then say, yeah, and then we made
The people you're asking are people that's got 10 of these going on.
But while Bruce was talking, I can think of three or four things I was asked to do this year where we spent a lot of time. And there was, it wasn't guaranteed that anyone was going to take the recommendation that my committee came up with. And I worked on some that were small where we were in agreement about that, but if you have 30 to 40 people, and we will purposely put people on this committee who come from divergent viewpoints, I don't know that even they will necessarily put forward one thing. I think as Charles was whispering to me, you know, I don't know sitting here exactly what I want, except I know I want this. I want to know what the community wants to do about the state of our schools and what we're going to do to improve them, if something. So, I will not sit here and say that whether you put two hours into it or 200, that I'm going to just agree with what you say, because that's not the responsibility I took on as a board member here. So, absolutely, you can call it a recommendation, an option, guidance, whatever you want. I, I don't actually think recommendation is a poor term, however, I am happy to use a different one. To me, I know what recommend, I, I recommend this to you. It doesn't make you do anything. But if you all feel that you prefer guidance or option, or we can discuss other things, I'm fine with that. What I am interested in is hearing from our community. We already listened tremendously
Yes.
To feedback about this, so I have some idea about how to do some of this differently. I also want everyone to understand that this is a community-wide project, not these seven peoples project. That's my view of it. So, I'm happy to consider different words, but I, as I said, I can think of four things I got asked to do this year where they either did or didn't take the view that we all put forward, but we did it knowing. It wasn't like I was, my vote was going to be the end-all, be-all. So, you're saying it has to do with how the, how this is framed to the group of stakeholders? Which I wrote down what you said, which was, you would want to be, you would want a clear statement about what we want. Except that I'm a little fuzzy on that, because he, then John points out, if you say too much, if you're too narrow and prescriptive, then people think we're telling them what we want, and we're not. They're listening. I don't think, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the X of what X is. But what's the question, the question? Right, but I think it's, at the end of this time, we expect to hear from you somewhere within these lanes, so that they're clear of where they're going on this bus. Right. I wrote, you're totally right, we just have to be careful about too narrowly tailoring it too much.
And how wide are those lanes?
Right, because they could go way, way out.
If they're too, too far, you're going to get recommendations that aren't even close to what information Too far, you're going to get recommendations that aren't anywhere close to what information we provided them, data that we've given them to do that, but you don't want it so narrow that it's a little grab a rope that they can't do that.
Might be worthy, there's some other community members who've been in the community a long time, so that participated in oh-three. I, I think the co-chairs at that point were Annie Bush and Brian Fogle, so you guys might want to independently reach out to them, get some feedback on the process, and just conversations. They said, we gave a set of recommendations, the board didn't rubber stamp and say, this is the bond issue, but it led to a future bond issue with a majority of those things in there. Not every one of them, there was a tweak here, a tweak there, but it was pretty darned close, right? And I think that's what we would...
The board did not follow all the recommendations from that study. I was on the study, it was not, they didn't follow. We took it, said, we'll do this and do that, so, which, for whatever reason, the board did that, it's a problem. But they, they did not take the recommendations and say, well, you gave it to us, we're going to do it.
To me, I think one of the potential virtues here is that, and I may reserve the right to change my mind at some point on this, that, that it is messy, it is intrinsically messy. And the value increases to the extent that the messiness increases. Because I don't think we can get meaningful engagement if we give them a set of recommendations and say, give us feedback on these. In effect, they debate on our side of the globe. I'd be inclined to sort of have wider boundaries out here, and I'm not sure where those are. And I think we as a board have to be prepared to hear stuff, A, that we don't expect, and maybe that we don't like, right? Now ultimately, it will be the seven of us sitting around this table, who, actually, probably be that one, but sitting around this room, who will have to make judgments. But I think the judgments will be better to the degree that we don't foreclose much of the debate any earlier than absolutely necessary.
And I think we start with fairly simple stuff, right? So here's our tasks, or here's our facility master plan, here's the survey data that we've collected from the community multiple different times after the previous bond issue results. And then here, and then based on that, here was the set of recommendations that you guys studied at your retreat, and then here's the things that we've done since then. That's what we know right now. What more information do you need, right? Do you need to go on a listening tour? Do you need to put out another survey that you want feedback on, a few questions that you don't have answered right now? What do you want to do in order to come up with a good set of findings and recommendations to the board?
But I think to Jill's point, that it's, it's still the seven of us' decision to make, regardless of what recommendations come back, regardless of what report says, the seven of us are the ones that make the decision. And you may take arrows with that. I mean, because if you ask, that's a risk of asking.
That's a good...
That's just part of, that's exactly it. And so, but I think everybody needs to understand that regardless of what comes out of the recommendations, the board still has the final say to, hey, thank you, but we're going right, still left.
Or we're taking some of these, but we can't do them all. I mean, this is a finite, if, if there was world enough in time and money, maybe we could do all of them, but we simply can't. There has, there's more, we are obligated to consider more things, maybe than we give them an open agenda to review. And that's fine, I, I would like them to think that. But I, I have two goals, I, one is to communicate better this time about what we're doing, and I think that's one of the things we're trying to do. And two is to gather a larger team to put this on. And so I, I want to include more people in the process who feel connected to the project. And I talk to people every day who say, I have kids, or I have grandkids, or I live near, and I want to be a part of this. So that's my thought on it. But I certainly agree, we should be careful to ask a question, so they don't just sit around and feel undirected.
Go ahead.
I would just say, one of the things that is really, really important here is, we didn't come up, or the consultants didn't come up with recommendations without a ton of data.
Right.
And I think it really will behoove us to make sure this group has all the data that's needed. We didn't come up with these in the back, and so, I mean, whether they come up with the same one or not, I don't know. But I don't want them to get a clean sheet of paper.
Right.
They need to have all the data, all the information that we all had, so, and it will be messy, and it will be a lot of work. But they need to have everything that we had, or that the consultants had, to help them make their decision. And if they don't, they're kind of shooting in the dark a little bit.
And John is basically outlining a draft out loud of all the documents that would be part of that context, but I would assume you could put that in writing, so that we could all see what all...
And that's what we would kind of say, initial documents, because they'd just be initial, right? Because here's what we have to share with you at this point, the facility master plan, reports, community surveys.
Like feedback from the bond, all that stuff.
The, when the architectural data comes in in late July, here's the renovation, because that was one of the things, right? The community said, go price renovation versus reconstruction. So here's something that the community told us, here's something we've done to provide you information. And so here are three or four things to start with. Now, what else do you need? We'll try to collect it if you need to, or do you want to collect and not some other way?
When one of you said a listening tour, but I say a listening, looking tour.
A tour.
Because I would really like them to see what we've been talking about in terms of what's out there. I think that would be really beneficial, listen to what the people who work in those buildings say about what could happen.
And maybe visit a few campuses, they're not going to be at fifty schools, right?
You don't think?
I, I don't know.
All right, that's fair, that's fair.
You've still got to get back to what happens inside the building, the learning. And I mean, that's data that's really, really important to have, is what's, what's happening, either one in the building, or two, what... And I don't know what the data is, I have no idea. But I don't think it's just bricks and mortar and utilities and stuff, it's got to be how, how the kids are learning.
One of the framing conversations can be similar to the presentation that we saw Ben and Mike do down in Republic. Talked about some of the, the progress that we've been making, and, and kind of reframing the perception and of how students learn.
Buildings are tools.
Yeah, and that how does, how does that, how do facilities complete that picture?
Yep.
If, in fact, they, the picture needs completing. But I, I think, I think we need to see a lot of the facilities in context, not just the facilities as means in themselves.
Yeah. I think that's an important point, Jerry raises a good point, and I think having all the, well, I don't know what all means, but having as much data available to them as possible. We should not necessarily censor on the front end. We need to give them the data, but not treat the data as evidence for a conclusion we've already reached, implicitly or otherwise. I think if the perception is that that's the case, we will not get the kind of folks who are going to be willing to invest their time. I don't believe we have, but I think it's how we represent, here are data, I mean, the data are what they are. What meaning do you make of them?
There are choices within all those documents we're talking about. There isn't a conclusion in those documents, there are tons of choices. So I, I hear you, you're right, but when we provide the evidence, it provides multiple choices. So I think by definition, that information exists that way. Anyone else?
I will make a general comment that I am in favor of a task, community task force. I like the term "community task force" on SPS facilities a lot better than blue ribbon commission, which is so vague, that this is much more specific, and tells me exactly what I'm signing up for, and tells the community, this is a short-term study on a particular subject, so just terminology and title, I like that. And just so I understand correctly, would, would the whole board have voice or input on, or look at the draft of potential stakeholders in some of that format, even though the final recommendations comes from the board officers?
I mean, that's your call, what I would say, what I would recommend is that individually, you submit names to the board officers, and then they make the asks, basically, then you can say, these are people that I would recommend based on their, which, which of these kind of things do they mark off, student, teacher, community member, or maybe multiple boxes, right? And then, then they can review kind of that long list, and say, the list is probably going to be fifty or sixty, people to sign up, it's going to be narrowed down to twenty-five or thirty, and then let them do that process. I don't know that you want to bring that here every, you know, that's going to take weeks and weeks to potentially run that process, and then you invite somebody that can't do it, then you've got to bring it back for a full board. So I, I would say, just to streamline it, is you give the names to the board officers and let them run the kind of selection process.
Um, I, I am interested, I'm just going to say it out loud to my fellow board members, I am interested in more stakeholders seeing the depth of information that the seven of us were, were able to... I mean, everybody, it's all, it's public documents, everybody could look at it, but I don't think there's...
You think there's a lot?
I don't think there's anybody watching this live at home right now, anyway, so. Maybe a few, but I, but I'm, I'm really interested in seeing a, a larger group of stakeholders dive into the documents, and commit to doing that, from a variety of different areas, arenas, viewpoints. Because I do feel like my experience in this community is when people come to the table, even with opposing viewpoints at the beginning of any issue, they all land closer to the middle in, in collaboration. So I think that that's something that I'm just excited about, to see their feedback, and more eyes, and more, more, more vision and commitment to our community. And I had another thought, I can't think of it right this second, but that's okay.
Well, do we want, is tonight the night, I cer, I agree with you, and I saw Jerry nodding, so I'm assuming on turn, in terms of calling it what it is, because I like that it leads with the term "community", because that's the other thing that's the focus of this. Do we all agree on that, or does anybody want to advocate for the ribbon concept?
Title work good on this document that's been handed out.
It calls it what it is, which is a good...
And we can start to, I'll work with Tim and Jill to kind of...
Yeah, the squirrel.
Add a couple things, maybe a driving question, and then a list of initial documents, right? Just so we know, and then...
And an offer of a tour, an extensive tour.
Right, and that would be in that initial information, kind of, say that there would be offer for a tour, and those kind of things, so.
Not just a tour, a tour and an opportunity to talk to some of the people who are in that building, because it's important to hear from them what they've been experiencing. Great, is that good? Anybody else on that topic?
So we'll try to, uh...
What? Moving my log. I'm moving on.
Jill and Tim.
I didn't cut you off.
We took some notes, so we'll try to, what we would hope to bring back is a updated draft.
She's talking to an old friend, and you're calling me out.
So we would hope to bring an updated draft on the fifteenth with clarity. And then it will be posted ahead of time, so that you can look at it and ask any questions, so that then you guys can have one more final discussion. If you're ready to approve on the fifteenth the process, then wonderful, and then the committee can kind of be formed with the opportunity to build in June. If you're not ready, then you can bring it back in the study session.
Does that resolve the concerns or thoughts that you wanted to express, Bruce?
I, it's fine, I mean, I'm, I'm good, mine was, I didn't have any answers.
Okay.
We don't either.
As opposed to any issue, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good point.
I didn't want it to end up being, and I thought your point is really the best here. This is not about the seven of us, or the administration, this is about Springfield, and what they want their schools to look like when none of us are on the board, or these people are not in their seats there, someplace else. What do you want it to look like? And for some reason, it's been identified as, oh, this is what the administration wants, or this is what the board wants, and seven people, and, you know, no reason we're doing this is because of, hopefully, they can help, just what you said, I couldn't say, I, this is about Springfield down the road, and this is, all of those people need to be, have a voice in it, and we'll be better. So I think your point was good.
Well, good, then we'll move on, then, that sounded nice to me. Okay.
Perfect, thank you for the feedback.
Okay, so we're going to move on to unfinished business, seven point oh-one, and Ms. Embry will come up again, get some more steps in on budget development, purchase services, and supplies.
Okay, this will be a very brief presentation, much like the very first one. And our focus this evening...
I love seeing those graduation pictures.
I know.
It's time for our favorite part of board service.
That's right, that's right.
I don't usually sing with them, but apparently my friend over here does.
I'm a geek.
So again, repeating our budget development timeline, so, so far, we have journeyed through different funds that are managed by Springfield Public Schools. And this evening marks our entry into what we refer to as operating funds. And I'm pointing out for you that at the May fifteenth meeting, we will take a deeper look at the salary and benefits construct within our district. And recall from previous information that's been provided you, that salary and benefits is nearly eighty percent of our operating expenditures. And so this evening, we're talking about purchase services and supplies, so that's the rest of the operating funds, for the most part. So this again reminds you of that split by fund, and this evening, we're, we'll talk about the primary areas within purchase services. So there are a number of charts, and really, it's to provide you with a little bit of context in terms of how those purchase services and supply dollars work. So when we look at the operating fund components, so again, we've talked about the GO-CAPS fund, the Health Benefit Trust Fund, Capital Projects Fund, and the Debt Service Fund. And the operating funds comprise two different specific categories, one being the general fund, and the second being the teacher fund. Within the general fund, we do run two sub-fund accounts. So our nutrition services is isolated into its own fund, Fund Fifty, and the student activities fund is isolated into Fund Sixty. So it's just a way for us to slice and dice. We actually have a, I believe, a seventeen-digit general ledger code structure that enables us to break it by fund, function, object, location, and project.
Cool.
The contributing fund sources are always those carryover fund balances, so whatever ends at fiscal year end, June thirty, rolls into the July one beginning balance. And then our three categories, or four, depending on how you look at local and county, for our revenue sources. And as a reminder, we'll cover details on revenue at the June five meeting, when the full budget presentation is provided. We are in that wait-and-see mode right now with regard to the activity and the capital, and also, we'll still be waiting for all of that final information for assessed evaluation. So seventy-nine percent, now, we are unique in that we do have our substitute costs segregated out from our Fund Ten, or excuse me, Object Code Ten and Twenty for salary and benefits. So we would likely be just right at eighty, or a little bit higher, with the inclusion of substitute services. But those are falling within the purchase services area. So you can see, again, salary and benefits comprising seventy-nine percent, supplies is twelve percent, and purchase services is nine percent, and the tiny little print there indicates thirty-three million and a little over twenty-two million. The, that shows it a little bit larger for you in relation to the overall operating budgets. So this now breaks it into the function category. I mentioned the general ledger code is in segments, and so with regard to the function, there is an instructional function, a support services function, and then a community services function. So the instructional function would be those costs that are directly associated with the classroom or the school building. The support piece is large, because that includes nutrition services and transportation. It also includes curriculum and other types of resources that would be providing for our students in the classroom, but they're not direct classroom costs. And then community services would include costs associated with breakfast in the classroom. You may remember from the Focus Area Three report in December, that that's run as a community services operation per DESI requirements. So this now takes another look at the object split on purchase services, and I'm highlighting for you just a few of those. So the professional and technical services section is comprising twenty-four percent of all of our expenditures, and this is relative to the current year budget, okay? So we can't talk about next year's budget yet. Substitute services represents twenty percent of our purchase services. And then we have a line for communication networking and internet services, that's nearly two-point-six million dollars, at twelve percent. Training, extracurricular activities, and supervision, eleven percent. And then the purchase services instructional services, eight percent. So of, this is just the top five categories, but they represent seventy-four percent of all purchase services. And then it gets divided, subdivided even further among a number of object codes. So to take a close look at that professional services line, so again, we just keep drilling down and dissecting each of those lines, you can see, I mentioned already, nutrition services and transportation being a large area for that. Also, custodial and grounds and building services, those costs would be included in that area. There any question, I know this is mind-numbing, basically, but again...
I'm just disappointed you didn't get into all the codes.
I know, no, you don't, you don't want to see all the codes.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Oh, but you do, yes. I would be happy to show them if you want to come in.
Carol?
So, yes, sure.
Transportation section, which is seventy-one thousand, which doesn't seem like very much.
No.
What, what, is that just gas maintenance, or gas fuel?
So there, there could be some of that type of expenditure within purchase services, where we need to outsource something to non-employee labor, okay? There, this could also include certain contracted transportation that we would partake of. And, and like you said, that's a very, very... And like you said, that's a very, very small number in the big scheme of the operation here. So not a lot of activity would be creating that cost. I can get you a list of specifics if you're interested. You'll see, it's very similar then, when we look at training, extracurricular activities, and supervision. And again, under other support services, we can dissect that further for you, but it's truly only 1.4 million in total, but it represents 59% of all of that. So this would include costs for the, this would include costs for such as transportation for students to go to games, that kind of thing. So that would be included within part of that other support services. Instruction, we have, so this would also support professional development, okay? So that instructional section that shows 33% cost would be included in that. For the supplies section, again, it's broken into those three primary function arrangements, and that is 40, excuse me, 57% is support services. And again, that stands to reason because of all the nutrition services supply costs when we purchase food and other items like that. It would, it could include utilities within this. And on the instruction side, it's the paper and coffee machines, it can be textbooks, that type of thing. This shows you a breakdown of that. Again, we're showing just the first five, the top five categories, and they represent 95% though of all the different object codes that are available within the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary General Ledger Code Structure. And you can see, food supplies is showing they're just under $6 million. We do purchase a lot of food, but we are feeding a lot of meals, feeding a lot of children many meals. And the utilities is listed separately per DESI requirement. We do have tech-related expenditures, and as I recall, that's, we segregate that out on our own. I don't believe that that's a DESI requirement. The books item, you can see that that's smaller, but a lot of that is relative to, if we looked at the specific purchases for learning support, a number of those resources are actually getting coded under supplies, because they're not specific books, they're other types of supplies for the instruction to support the curriculum that has been developed. There could be workbooks included in that, or the hands-on maker spaces type supplies that would be included within the general supply line. Very exciting stuff, isn't it?
Well, sorta.
Okay, so here are our primary object codes shown in graph form. So that information that was on the previous slide is now shown to you in graph form.
I think it'd be pretty interesting if we didn't have those things, people would be complaining, so.
Well, see, and again, so I did do the math to see, well, how much of our instructional supplies is represented in general supplies? And so we dissected that line, and 66% of that large general supply amount is instructional. So when you see that big blue graph area, 66% of that is focused on directly for kids. So again, I mentioned nutrition services and general maintenance, and then also, any warehouse supplies that we're purchasing into the warehouse, and then providing through pick tickets for classrooms and offices, those would be coded under the general supply category. So the big thing I want you to understand about all of this is that you know that we are working through the collective bargaining process for the nearly 80% of our operating budget. But also, in the meantime, I shared with you early on that the leaders throughout the district are working in providing detailed information to the finance department, and all of that is getting worked through and reconciled, and will ultimately culminate in our budget recommendation to you June 5. So this is taking a look at the current year. Typically, year over year, it's basically the same information, and truly, each of our leaders is looking individually at the specific costs, and is that the right threshold for budgeting for next year? We're not doing a zero-based budgeting process, but the way we scrub through all of it, it's close, especially in terms of looking at the primary expenditures by leader. So this is a chart version of all the supplies in the district, and you can see that the largest is the instructional area. So that is it. Any questions for me at this point in time?
Anyone have questions?
It is very helpful.
Very helpful.
No, I know, I know we tease you about, we don't want to see the 16 number code, but it is very helpful context, and the more, every year we see it, the more it makes sense.
It gels a little more, doesn't it?
That's right.
Okay.
You might not want to go too terribly far.
Yes, because I'm up again.
Well, I'm going to turn to my friend, Mrs. Luton, and ask her if we have any non-agenda items to address, and if we do not, so if you didn't get any steps on that one, we'll move to 9.01.
Actually, I'm going to go grab something.
Oh, good, very good.
I should have brought it with me. I thought, oh, I'll sit down during public comment.
Okay, Focus Area 3, mid-year update.
If you have any follow-up questions as you dig into the purchase services, let us know, but it does give you help, hopefully, understand the picture of transportation and food service and then the instructional elements, so.
Just the supplies.
There's lots of, next time, you're going to see the people part, right, which is the, by far, the largest.
People, yes. Okay.
Okay.
So I would like, at this time, to invite Dr. Travis Shaw to join me at the podium. This will be his maiden voyage at the podium, okay? In Springfield Public Schools. So Dr. Shaw is our Executive Director of Operations, as you well know, and for a portion of this presentation, he will provide that information to you, but I'll stay with him. I will, yes.
Because the waters are seeming to be scary.
Oh, hairy.
And Travis, would you like to go ahead and introduce others, the two gentlemen in the audience that care deeply about this presentation?
Jesse Coulter is one of our energy management specialists, and Gary Bresman, I believe is his boss, and so they are on campus just as year-over-day. He's one of our energy specialists. Michelle Sewell is not here, but Gary spends quite a bit of time down monitoring what's going on, so.
And Sean Dilday is our Director of Facilities. And Sean is our boots-on-the-ground supervisor for the energy portion, and will be sharing on the energy portion this evening, so. Okay, very good. So I would like to remind you first that this is our mid-year report for Focus Area 3, and as indicated on the slide for you there, we are focused on aligning, managing, and optimizing resources. And we do that to help students improve in their success, but it keeps us financially sustainable, and it truly frees up more resources that can then be invested in our kids, and that's our total focus. I always say too, and it's even on my block, if you've seen my block in my office, that I'm always wanting to remove barriers. And I know that the entire team feels the same way, too. So as we journey through our work, that's our focus as well. It's always taken back to the learner. So for this evening, we are highlighting some of our awesome savings, and much of this you've already received in previous board reports, as we've asked you to approve those costs. But certainly, we were highlighting the debt service refinancing, and also, the recent contracts for health, and then the energy savings program. So our strategy 3.1.3, maximizing revenue, aligning expenditures to meet priorities, and controlling costs as appropriate while supporting the efforts of our educational partners, individual donors, and business groups to augment our existing district resources, is our focus this evening. Very familiar information that you've seen before, in excess of $9.7 million net savings for the refinancing that occurred just a few months ago, and those bond issue, individual issues are listed there for you. And again, high importance is that we did not extend the life of that debt. We are simply saving interest dollars. So that's a, truly a celebration. We likely will include this in our, in our large report that we do in December and post for public consumption, but wanted to remind ourselves of the work that went on to make that happen. With regard to the health contract savings for 2019, you can see we have listed the pharmacy benefit, the third-party administrator claims processing, and also, our health services provider medical network agreement. One of those, we don't know the true value of that yet, but with regard to the pharmacy benefit, $383,000 was saved as we renewed those contracts. Third-party administration that reduced our expenditure by $35,000. And with regard to the Mercy Agreement, I will highlight for you that in 2016, we had a shared savings of over $1.2 million. In 2017, we had a shared savings of $360,000. And it, the savings that ultimately will be brought to fruition is relative to the actual claims experience and the costs that occur. So we want our staffs to be healthy and their families, but dependent on the specific expenditures that will create the net savings for us. So now, I will turn it over to Travis, and he will provide the update on Synergistic. I'll still be here, just in case I think of something.
In case I start to drown on my.
Yes.
So I think it's important to take us back about two and a half years prior to me coming, obviously, and remind everybody where this started. So back in November of 2015, there was an RFP that was led for an energy savings service to work with the district. In January of 2016, Synergistic was approved to partner with the district. Upon their approval and the initial five-year agreement that we have in place, what they projected for us was that we would have $2.76 million net savings, cost avoidance savings, over five years. There was no capital that we had to invest upfront. As stated, we have two, what we call, energy management specialists that are employed by Synergistic but work in the district daily. They're out in the buildings all the time, monitoring. And then we also have the luxury of having a team of engineers in other positions with Synergistic that we have as resources if needed when it comes to issues or consulting and things of that nature.
I would like to highlight that that truly was the original message to the board. This was no capital investment. This is about changing behaviors, and not so much behaviors of people in the buildings on a daily basis, but especially taking a look at how we bring on those HVAC units, the load, and off-hours, so that we could not have our energy usage spike in those moments in time. So just looking at our behaviors overall.
So to give you some context, once the approval was made to partner with them, a base year was established. So they went back even behind when the contract was approved, and you can see the base year representing April 2015 to March 2016, and took a baseline of all of our utility usage. From that time, they then do a six-month quick startup. They began implementation over that amount of time, and then the program officially started October of 2016. And so as we, as I can comment on some data as we go through this, that first performance year is represented in the green, and that's October 2016 to September of 2017. So there are several different ways to measure whether or not the energy savings program that's in place has been successful. And so I'm going to go through three different slides that give you the different ways to measure. A lot of them use abbreviations like KWA, which is kilowatt hours. But here's the first one in this example, talks specifically about electricity use. And so as you'll see, the red line again is our base year, the blue is the six-month quick start, and then we have the green, performance year one. And you're going to see, obviously, in that chart, that we've got a great decline on that slope, which is a 19.6% reduction in electricity use in the district during that first performance year, which tells us that our people are doing all of the right things to get the energy consumption to move the way we want it to move.
Jerry has a question.
Yeah. Is that sort of normalized for weather?
Weather, yes.
With respect to?
Yes, weather days are.
I mean, if it was a cold summer or a cooler summer, your usage obviously would be down, but is that somewhat normalized so that we are kind of comparing apples to apples?
Correct. And what you're going to see in two other slides that measure this differently, with different units that measure, you'll see how that will change some things.
This is just raw data?
This is raw data from our meters with city utilities and electric use.
So Synergistic uses specialized software, it's called Energy Cap, and it, there's actually this formula validation process that they go through, and there are a multitude of factors that are applied to the evaluation process.
Do you have a question?
Oh, no. Thank you.
So another way that we measure is through energy use intensity, or EUI. And basically, what this is, is this is the amount of energy, the total energy that's used in, per square foot in our buildings, okay? So to kind of understand this a little bit, schools generally have a very, very low EUI. If you think about what happens in schools, there's not a ton of things that are in place that create a lot of energy, as far as, now, kids do, but as far as mechanical, no. Compared to businesses like restaurants or hospitals, those are going to have very high EUIs naturally. So this slide represents, again, the red is our base year, the blue is our quick start, and then our green is the performance year one. And as you'll see, the energy use intensity, we've actually had a 22% decrease there in the amount of energy per square foot that gets used in our buildings. And again, we love the fact that everything was pretty much stable, and then we implement our behavior changes, and now we see an amazing decline. And so it's not like just implementing equipment or changing behavior of staff and students and everybody that's involved in our buildings, which means, long-term, we're going to see extensive energy savings throughout decades to come, so.
I'll wait.
No, go right ahead.
So I didn't have the last two sentences you said, because I was thinking about my question, but something along the lines of, so we're seeing these massive drops in benefits and changes, but I'm just assuming I wouldn't expect to see that this would be the biggest change now, and then it would level off, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, you should sustain, once you, once you get to that point now, we're going to show some challenges that we faced, and some things that we can overcome some of those challenges, we will see some more reduction. There's always room to improve, there's always opportunities for improvement as we, and that's partly why we have energy specialists that are out in the buildings to be able to see these things, and to give feedback and to provide that information for us, but for the most part, yes, and we're going to see that flat now. So this comments a little bit of what I've said regarding the energy use intensity, and so some of the efforts that we have made to reduce the amount of EUI in our buildings, we stagger our start times in the morning, and I'll talk more about how that affects demand, but by staggering that, that makes a big difference with all of our heating and cooling units coming on as they come out of their set points. Properly maintaining our equipment, I would say, and Sean can echo this, that we are in a better place now than we've ever been when it comes to preventative maintenance, and our staff being out. That's what our group, right now, from 12 to 9 every day, they are out doing preventative maintenance on all things throughout the district, and so that's been a huge piece that's helped us here. We do have some motion sensor lighting in some of our areas that affects that. We do have some buildings that have great natural sunlight, and that affects, not happy to have lights on all the time, and provides really great lighting effect for our kids. But another thing, too, and the things that we don't think about, but when we're off on brakes, extended brakes, just unplugging things, the amount of energy that's used from electricity just by having something plugged in, even though you don't use it, makes a big difference if all of our staff will take care of that, so.
You want to come to my house and tell my kids?
I was just getting ready to say that.
I have a 15-year-old as well.
I'm wondering if they do off-hours, just an hour at our house, yeah.
Actually, they do work off-hours.
Do they?
But not at your house.
Okay. They'll keep expanding things to you.
Yeah, we're open.
So the final way that we look at measurement is through KBTU or BTU, which is the British Thermal Unit, okay? So that measures heat energy and the amount of heat needed to raise one pound of water 1 degree Fahrenheit. So this one is the combination of gas and electric together, and you'll see through the base year and the first performance year, we saw a reduction of 52 million KBTU, or 52 billion BTU, if you will. And again, we're in that 19% range of that combination, specifically, again, straight off of meters, okay? Okay? So, various different ways, what we love to see is the fact that we're around 20%. Now, 20% is great. When I went to the, the training conference with Synergistic a few months ago, there were districts that were 32%. They range. So, when, we do have opportunities for improvement, but as, as I'll show you here in a little bit with our challenges, we have some things that, that may be difficult, very difficult to overcome. So, we'll talk about those in just a little bit. So, the challenges that, that we face, one of them is our rate structure with utilities. Our rates are comparable to, to our region. But one of the things that we have a challenge with is the fact that it's relative to demand usage. And it, it does affect the annual utility expenditure that we have because of the way that the utility demand is in place. So, here's a graph that can give you an idea. In our base year, it's blue, okay? And, and then, in our first performance year is green. That dot up there that's circled is the peak demand. Peak demand is calculated through the months of June, July, and August. And so, whatever timeframe and it's calculated every 15 minutes. And so, whichever 15-minute timeframe in June, July, or August that's the highest, that's our rate structure for the rest of the next 12 months.
The average for the whole year?
I'll show you, the next slide will give you a good idea of what I'm talking about.
That's ridiculous.
So, here's, here's what I'm, here's what I'm referencing.
I am picturing.
Blue is actual demand. So, that's what our actual demand was in blue, red is what we're built. Okay? So, it's a ratchet demand. It's something that is applied to not only us, but every business within the community. We're not isolated there, but it certainly has an effect throughout the year on our bills and.
It's your fault.
I was going to ask the utility man on the board.
It's not, that is not an uncommon thing. And, and the reason this is, okay, this demand is applied because they have to have specific infrastructure in place to be able to cover the high-demand usage. So, you take the high-demand usages that we have and you combine it with all of the other businesses and homes and everybody within Springfield, and it's out the roof, they have to have the infrastructure in place to be able to take care of that, which is why that ratchet demand is in place. I don't like it, none of us like it.
Ratchet demand.
That's what it's referred to.
Which one of the things will impact that is explore.
Yeah?
Sure.
Because now, you've got kids in the building that you wouldn't have had before.
Well.
Which is where your peak, demand's going to be determined.
And that's exactly how that, that, that's why the difference on that previous chart, the base year, we didn't have two months worth of support. So, we stand programming, which is great. We're doing great things for kids.
Yeah, I'm not saying that's bad.
But there's a cost to it. And so, now, you have the demand in the first performance year that's calculated off of that.
So, when you tell us before you get to this ratchet issue that it's a 19% decrease, that doesn't correlate to a 19% reduction of cost?
That's correct.
We're saving energy.
Dicky, dicky, dicky.
Okay, yeah. And there's nothing, okay, but that's an important difference. Cost avoidance.
It is cost avoidance, to think about what that building would be if we didn't have these measures in place.
That you're paying for power plants.
Perhaps, but I'm, it's just, we have to be careful what that stands for. And it does not stand for cost savings.
Yeah.
And we'll.
We'll, we'll show you the cost.
So, are you going to show us how energy savings does save us cost?
We'll, we'll show you some actual savings.
Let me, let me just back up for just a second to make sure I understand this. So, because the first time I heard about this was at SLA healthcare when we were talking to some of the associated managers that were up there, we're seeing, talking about demand. And so, that was the first time I'd heard that demand being set there. So, then, then it begs the question of, you know, strategies for building usages of explore even that helps set our rates.
We have that line on there, the district is studying consumption in the summer due to the building construction.
Summer nights.
Definitely between 3:00 and 5:00.
That's absolutely right.
But I mean, I'm assuming you all, you all are already seven steps ahead of us, but.
Becomes more and more important that we, we need to fill buildings in the summer, have less buildings that are being used.
Right.
While providing the right service level for our.
Absolutely. So, it's a balance.
There are costs of doing business.
That's right.
Fortunately, fortunately, the daily peak does not occur when there's kids in the building typically.
Typically right after.
I mean, 3 to 5 is going to be your peak.
Right.
Usage, and we don't have kid, usually don't have very many kids in the building, so.
But that's the heat of the day.
Yeah, that's why the kids are out there. And so, hopefully, we're doing things to keep that demand, hourly demand down.
Everybody goes outside for recess at the end of the day and then goes home, right?
Ship that, ship that air conditioner on.
And I do, I do understand their, their need to forecast their projections for service. So, they're taking the, but they're, it's not like our health insurance where we get cost savings at the end if we didn't use all of our projections.
Yeah, no.
They don't give a buck.
Okay. All right. So, we covered that one, right? Okay.
So, some of the implementation challenges that we have are because of our equipment. We've got a lot of old buildings, as you know. We replace equipment when we can, but as Carol has mentioned many times from the podium, we're way behind on a lot of these things. We've got a lot of equipment in buildings that's undersized and slow to recover. And what happens is because of that, it will not recover fast enough. If we do a shutdown, we found this out over Christmas break this year, we had a shutdown and we had some sites that just did not make it back up because it got below a certain temperature. Now, remember what it was like that time of year. It was colder than normal, but once it gets below 24, 25 degrees, some of our sites, we have to leave running 24/7. We just cannot shut them back. And so, that is a, a challenge that doesn't allow us to capture all of the savings that we could. We've got several sites with old dial-up controls, analog thermostat, which are in our queue right now of working on. We've got two scheduled this summer to take care of. We've got five more on the next cycle approval list that will, will help assist that programming piece. Because what we have is a lot of activities and things going on in our buildings, which our folks are getting much better at utilizing our software that our energy specialists communicate with to know, when do we shut, set buildings back? Should we shut them down? When we set them back, and when do we leave them running? Because we've got, nothing's more frustrating than when you have an activity on a Saturday going on and you get in there and the air conditioning is turned way up to 85 degrees or whatever. So, those have been challenges that we've had to work through, getting better as we go. But the focus has always been and will continue to be keeping our staff and students comfortable while being better consumers of energy. That's the goal.
Travis?
Yes.
Talk about mechanical equipment. I know, Bruce, you, probably, several years ago, we spent a bunch of money replacing lights and the light and with, do what?
Those sensor lights that when you walk into.
Yeah, I mean, are we, are we pretty much up to speed, state-of-the-art at this point on light? Because that's a huge, huge cost.
I would say the answer to that is no.
Okay. All right. I, I mean, we spent a bu, well, you were, a bunch when we did the lighting project.
Yeah, it's a massive, massive undertaking.
You weren't here, okay.
Yeah, massive undertaking to get everything changed out to LED and.
Sensors and all that. I just, I was just curious if that's.
I think the technology's.
Hopefully, that's paid off at that time. That's, that's the, that's my question.
Right.
We haven't talked about lighting at all, and is that still an issue out there that we need to be talking about?
It would be on a list of many projects. Our focus currently with regard to how we're investing or recommending investment of capital dollars would be those units that we are at risk of failure and that we can't repay. Okay? That, that would be the extreme of what we're dealing with here.
Because I know when, when we had the discussion, if you remember, we didn't, we stayed away from the HVAC and just stuck to lighting because of the huge expense that we thought the HVAC system was going to create expenditures to, to do all that stuff. So, we basically just said, we take care of all the lights. And we got it taken care of, but so.
Should we make the assumption that our older buildings are causing, are costing us more than our newer buildings?
That's a fair assumption.
Without a doubt.
Absolutely.
Fair assumption.
Just as we're looking forward in our community.
Renovation will certainly make a big difference on energy use in those buildings. So, here's the, the dollars that you, we're kind of looking for. So, while we had implementation, limitations to our implementation, the program has been successful. So, since inception, we have had a cost avoidance of over 1.5 million dollars, okay? Which represents a savings of 764,000 to the district, which matches up. We did get this information from them, it matches up with, we are on track to seeing a 2.76 million dollar net savings over five years based on the numbers that we currently have in place. Yes?
That's outstanding. Have we thanked the people that we need to thank for that? Because that's the work in those buildings who have made the changes. Have we sent that message out to them to thank them?
Yes, that's been one of the, one of the tasks, the pieces that our energy specialists do. They, a lot of positive reinforcement, all of those things. We get recognized with some, some different, when we see really energy-efficient buildings. And so, we make a big deal out of letting them know, hey, you're, what you're doing is positive. So, yes, we, we, but to, to, to the comment about the older buildings, there's going to be some of those older buildings that are just never going to achieve the same kind of level. So, which is unfortunate, but again, it's a matter of just constantly reinforcing, here's what's happening that's making a difference.
As long as we don't become a pain. I mean, they do have to turn on the lights and.
Right. That's exactly right.
Turn on the copier.
There's a, there's a perfect balance to, how do you manage that from a positive standpoint?
That's right.
Of doing things the right way, but not becoming.
Big brother.
Is that savings pretty much district-wide or is that specific areas that you've targeted? Low-hanging fruit, sort of speak, that you've done, is that pretty much district-wide?
We're applying the same logic and plan for each site until we hit a limitation of the equipment in that, or the programming in that particular area. So, certainly, we would have more savings at one site versus the other, but all the data.
I know we're looking at district.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't delved into looking at the individual sites except for there are targeted sites that we're exploring more deeply.
So, to hit the projection, we would need, in effect, to save an additional 500,000 for each of the next four years.
And that's what is, that's what has been provided to us is still the projection that that would happen.
So, the, the 760 is, is above that, but that's not really low-hanging, that's not just low-hanging proof. And there are some pretty substantial additional savings that we're going to realize in the aggregate of $2 million additions over the next four years. Where do you, where do you see those big savings coming from?
Well, I would just add, you know, the baseline year has been set. So, everything, every year, even if we replicated every year, then it would be the 764 level, okay?
Compared to the baseline of the base year.
Yeah. So, that, that gap will remain is the anticipation to where we would certainly.
So, we wouldn't save an additional necessarily. And this is not arguing, but this, we're not saving an additional 500,000. We will save less from the, the, the initial year than we made last year.
It's a conservative expectation in terms of fulfilling the contract. So, if we simply maintain the course, we will continue to save this much. And when you accumulate that, it meets that threshold of the original commitment.
It's over what we would have paid if we had done that.
Right.
And that's.
Because this is strictly cost avoidance that we're talking about.
So, we're using cost avoidance and net savings in the same, as the synonymous.
We have another slide on savings.
This here represents cost avoidance, which is basically what you actually spend on utilities if you would have been doing the same things. So, by changing what we're doing, we would have spent 1.5 million dollars more than we already have.
Based on our consumption.
Which is, which is really big when you consider that, uh, that's based on less than 5.3 million spent on utilities in the base year. That's, that's a lot. It's, it's not so much that it's a lot of money avoided, it's just that, well, yeah, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, no, that is that.
It really is.
Our behavior didn't change during, since October 2016, we would have spent as a district over 1.5 million more than we currently do.
And I also noticed in your budget presentation, Carol, I was paying attention, is that you budgeted 5.165 million.
That's in the current year.
It, yeah, for this year, which is $120,000 less or about 5% less for this year.
So, there's actual savings, right? You know, dollar over dollar, and then, there's what we would have been spending based on the increases, based on our behaviors, based on putting explore in, all of those things, those things that would have driven us to this 1.5 million dollar increase if we didn't change behavior.
So, our next slide shows real money.
So, filling year of September 2015 to September 2016, utility costs were almost 5.3 million. The actual rate increases that were applied from CU was 4%. That's, throw away the idea of the ratchet demand piece, this is real increased cost. So, if we were to pay and do the same exact thing, same utility usage, we would have paid almost 5.5 million with that increase. But instead, we actually paid just under 5.1 million because of the implementation of the program, which means that we actually had nearly 400,000 in actual dollars saved because of what we have in place. So, to me, you've got cost avoidance, but yes, we would have loved to have seen a lot more money saved, but that's, that's a lot of money still.
We're moving in the right direction.
Yes, I'm in.
And it's what you told us we would see if we did this.
Yes.
I remember.
And so, I would also like to remind you that this, when we engaged in this, when the board at that time approved this relationship, it's a five-year commitment. And at that point in time, it will be the sitting board's decision as to what happens moving forward. But if the relationship ends at that point in time and then, we longer would have energy specialists on staff provided by Synergistic, we would still continue to reap the benefits of this gap that has been instituted through these measures. So, that's huge when you look at it through that lens.
Pretty good maiden voyage.
Who brought Synergistic to the district? Or who brought the idea of Synergistic to them?
She did.
I had experienced the benefit of Synergistic in the Liberty School District where I worked previously.
I just don't know that I've.
You were. It was really early for me.
Okay.
It's like one of the first things they said that I kind of understood.
Now, I would not, I would not discount that potentially administration here had considered it as well, but we had real experience in our previous district.
Okay. And then, two, I, I just want to, I don't know, I'm not all about shout-outs, but I want to give a shout-out to the teachers and the staff who came in one morning. Let me back up. Changing behavior is very difficult. It is very difficult. And so, I want to give a shout-out to the teachers and staff who I have witnessed come in the next morning and there's a little, "Don't forget to unplug your computer," which, you know, I don't care who you are, where you're at, it can come across kind of like, oh, thank you very much.
We actually stopped doing that.
Do I, do you hear her? Okay. Exsane that.
So, I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that regardless of all the different ways in which we were trying to motivate behavior changes, I think that, that I'm just thankful for the people who are in the building.
Sure.
Unplugging things, adjusting the thermostat when they come back in in the morning, all those little behaviors, even though they seem kind of annoying and when you're trying to make those changes, are, are another ask. We see the compiled impact of it right now, so.
But you know, we're saving paper now too, because we're not writing those stupid notes. It's all good.
We're all about savings, huh?
The notes, Travis, were stupid and we're done with it.
Yeah, would you do an analysis of that?
We're not going to analyze the cost.
We determined that that did not produce the value.
It had an intended message that failed, and when you fail, you regroup.
Cognizance approach.
It's a perfect example that not all measures put in place are going to work in every situation. It may be great and effective in one district, but it may not work in others.
But I appreciate you all regrouping because it wasn't cool and it needed to stop. We did it and we're still saving cash.
We are. It's a grand business. Okay. Well, that concludes. Well, that concludes our presentation. This is simply a list of all six strategies for Focus Area Three, and at our December report, we'll bring you new information about progress being made. You have any other questions?
Good work.
No, that's great. Great. Thank you, sir. Okay, have we ten?
Yeah.
Look at us go, people. Report from administration, thirteen point oh one Superintendent Short Update. I added short.
See that in the notes.
I didn't see that either, but...
I will keep it brief, though. Number one, hopefully you have all your calendars ready for the graduations, so we've got lots of them, from studi to middle college to the five at JQH, so please get ready for the exciting finish of the school year with, with our graduates. Also, we're in the middle of deep assessment season, so if you're close to schools and close to teachers, you know they're in math testing and the course exams, I ready testing, ACT, all of the things are, and this is the season of heavy assessment. So our teachers are working hard, and our students are showing what they know. Last thing on update, just to bring you more information as we continue to work towards a final recommendation of safety and security components that will be part of the budget process, just want to put this in your hands. If you remember, I had a document not too long ago that had twenty-four kind of bulleted items that had been gathered with feedback from community, different stakeholder groups that I'd been able to meet with over the last couple of months. Went back to that same kind of group and did another set of prioritization. So those were just ideas to begin with and themes, and now we're starting the prioritization process. Far from a final recommendation, but just want to keep you updated. So if you look, we've got student feedback, parent feedback, teacher feedback, and SLT represents senior leadership team. And have them kind of rank, prioritize, not rank, but one, represent critical need, two, necessary but not critical, and then a three represented, would be nice to have but not necessarily necessary. So what you see here are the eighteen items that remain at an average of necessary or above, right? So they had an average of two point oh or above. If you look at the red column to the far right, you see far down bottom, it's a one point nine six. They are just ranked by the total average, and you can see how different groups look at them a little differently.
Yeah, fascinating.
Parent advisory group, student advisory, teacher advisory, and then senior leaders. So that's a little different. They're all in the ones and two ranges, right? But this kind of gives you just another round of feedback, because what we're looking at is we try to build a final recommendation. So all of these are gonna be either in the critical from the feedback, that would give you a, and the other thing is a mode of one.
What was the...
So one is a critical, two is necessary but not critical, and then three would be nice to have but not necessary at that point. So those have been removed, anything...
Critical, necessary, but...
Or nice, yeah. One, two, or three. Necessary but not critical.
Not critical.
Necessary but not critical.
Okay.
And then three is nice to have but not necessary.
Gotcha.
What are the Ns in each one of these categories?
So they're a little different. Student, so they're around twenty, thirty, ten, depend on the different group. The total package, I think, is around a hundred and sixty represented, so that gives you, so the N does affect the averages a little bit. But I wanted to make sure you saw different groups and how they kind of viewed it, that we've met with over the last month to do another classification. So we pulled the threes off. If they had a mode of three, right? So that was, we had twenty-four items, we're down to eighteen.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you had twenty-four on that original document, you're down to eighteen. So anything that was an average in that, or a mode at that level.
I remember that original document, but then last board meeting, you also made some recommendations of prioritizing things based on, I don't want to say it incorrectly, but I don't know if it was budget priorities or, what was that, what was it at the last board meeting? That you, that SLT...
Yeah, we've, I think I'd already taken some feedback, right? And, but since then, I've been able to get the teacher advisory group, parent advisor, and student advisory, so added those kind of elements.
Okay, so those, this is all kind of the same, but not...
I think I anecdotally reported, but this is the full picture of those four groups. And just want you to see whether the modes are falling and where the, kind of the priorities are applying. And the category is to the far left, whether it's a facility enhancement or an engagement strategy. If you remember, they were in those different themes. The strategy in itself is in kind of the larger text column, and then the different groups. So again, just want you to stay in tune with what we're getting feedback and how the process is moving, and as we get closer to the final budget recommendation, there'll probably be some staffing components, there'll probably be some training components, there'll probably be some facility and capital components, but it's based on lots of dialogues that we're having with different stakeholder groups. So if you have feedback or things that you're hearing again, make sure that you let us know, but just want to keep you informed of where we are on this really, really important conversation, so. That really hits my update, legislative update. Just know that we are in the throes of the final few weeks, so I will be in Jeff City tomorrow engaging again. It's really the budget conference work that is the next important hurdle to pass. We know the House budget where it wa, the governor's budget where it was, the House budget. Now, the Senate has kind of come in between those two, to be honest. They reduced the formula down a little bit, back closer to where the governor had it, but they did also put an infusion of transportation in. Now, those things all have to go to conference to be worked out. So that process is underway, and we'll see where we land. They have to have that approved by the end of week, next week, so we're getting close. And then there's one more week of non-budgetary work that kind of plays out that final week, so we're getting really close. Overall, still good. We'll hope that the House version is closer to where they land in conference, but we'll, we'll know soon, so we'll be advocating for that when I'm up tomorrow, meeting with some people.
Good, thank you.
That's it on legislative side, unless you guys have anything else. That's really the big item, state board stuff. I think you've stayed in tune to that, and your association's been highly engaged in giving lots of feedback regarding that. And it appears that where we are is where we are, probably likely for the end of the session. So they've taken up the one member, rejected that member, or set him aside based on what played out on the Senate floor, and then I think we'll probably just be where we are until the session ends, so.
And then we're likely to get six new board members.
And then we'll see what the next step is.
Then who's got...
So that's it on legislative, sorry.
Thank you. All right, and so, board comments? Does anybody have anything additional to say that you haven't had an opportunity to say this evening? All right, I see nothing on that. We have some upcoming meetings, fourteen point oh two. I'll announce our absolutely favorite thing to do as board members, which is May tenth and eleventh. We're going to give out diplomas. I think we're all in agreement, that's the very best thing we get to do, and I think we're all set, everybody got the ones they wanted. I continue to be on rotation, I want to go to all of them before I'm done here. And then we have the two thousand and eighteen retirement reception scheduled for May the fifteenth, which is a Tuesday, at four P.M. prior to our regular meeting, so we can thank and wish well to those who are retiring this year. I hope all of you can make that. And then we do have our next regularly scheduled meeting for Tuesday, May fifteenth. And we have invitations, I think, here tonight. Some of you have already opened your mail. We have middle college graduations scheduled for May sixteenth at five thirty at the Geloys Theater. That's a fancy place to graduate, so that sounds good. And then if anybody wants to do any plus deltas, feel free to do that.
I'm not gonna be here May fifteenth, probably. June second, third is Mississippi Leadership Summit, so that's Friday. I don't know if you've got all that information, and the safety conference is right after that.
Okay.
So we have a safety conference Monday and Tuesday right after that in Tentera. So if anybody, it's for boards, and it's not just law enforcement, it's for boards and administrators and everybody, so.
Well, I would encourage you, too, who I think is very involved in that, aren't you? The safety part of it?
A little.